Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to the Charter Revision Pre-Seminar of the Special Meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. Could we all rise and take? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please bother on?
Mr. Burnett. Mr. Goldstein. Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. Najelski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers. Mr. Seed. Mr. Wiggins. Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. McMur. Ms. Murray. Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven in attendance.
Thank you. So before we get introduced to Mr. Steve Mednick, we'd just like to welcome you all again to the pre-charter seminars that we've put together to continue the city's efforts in revising and updating our city charter, which has not been done in over 100 years since last year. So last November, you know, that we did make updates to the charter. We started that process, and Mr. Mednick was part of that for us. And so we are on to the next phase of that update. So I will turn it over to Mr. Mednick.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council, my good friends who are participating in the panel. I'm going to open up with a few words, try to set a context on what we're about to embark on. I'm reading a book by the great writer and historian Jill Lepore right now, which she talks about "The Age of Consent," a column that she wrote back in 2021. And she talked about from the time of Hammurabi's Code, which no one could read, because no one could read, to Magna Carta, which disappeared shortly after King John fixed his seal to it in 1215. And even to our Constitution, these documents only maintain relevance if they're known. That's what she wrote, and here's what I want to say. A charter must be known. A charter must be read, it must be readable, it must be understandable and cogent. What the mayor, the council, the Charter Commission, the people of Norwalk, with over 80% of the vote last November tried to do with this charter was to make it a readable charter, and I think that they have accomplished that. And it's really one of my pleasures that I was involved in that process. We're here tonight because the leaders back in 2023 and their appointees on the Charter Commission recognized that Norwalk could not tackle some of the thornier political issues in that initial charter revision while we were trying to clean the charter up and make it more accessible to the public. The debate over four-year terms or the balance of power between the mayor and the council would have created barriers to reorganizing the document. Those are not irreconcilable issues, but there are issues that will take a lot of time and a lot of work. And I think that's why the council has undertaken this exercise to begin to take a look at some of those issues before they appoint a Charter Commission. In the work of tackling the issues of structure, balance of power, the operational and service needs of the city starts this evening with what I hope will be a lively discussion on the role of the legislative body. I've gone to a number of officials from around the state, some of whom are friends, some of whom are clients, people I've worked with over the years on their charters and other things in the government. I'm going to start off with somebody I really don't know very well, except by reputation, the mayor of West Hartford, Sherry Cantor. Sherry has been mayor for a number of years at this point. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on introductions because we want to take advantage of the time we have to listen to our panel members. And I'm going to take her out of order, and I apologize to the other members of the panel because I think the mayor does have another commitment in town, an official commitment. And so she draws the first straw. West Hartford is a town, and you can correct me, mayor, if I'm wrong, of 63,000-plus people. It's a council manager form of government. And I'll ask the mayor to do in a very brief statement, three to five minutes, whatever she wants to take, is to give an overview regarding that form of government, the role of the mayor in that form of government, the council, the manager, and how that works out in the balance. And then if she has time, we'll ask her a few questions. When we're done with the mayor, we will then go through all the other speakers and then open up questions when they're completed. But because she has a hard stop, I wanted to take her out of order. And I just want to, it's my pleasure to introduce to the council and to the public Mary Sherry Cantor of West Hartford.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it. And you guys, actually, all of you on the common council, this is such a big, a big job. And I know it sounds like you're doing all the right steps to make it the best it can be. So yes, we have a, we were one of the first in the country over, it's about now 104 years, I think, that we've had council manager form of government. And so that's, that has stayed and nothing has changed. We have a council of nine, and the mayor is actually president of the council. It's not by popular vote, although most people think it is. So usually it aligns. It doesn't always align. Deputy mayor is also a vote of the council, and usually it aligns the second most votes, but again, not always. So and we have had some situations where, and actually in the recent past, where we've had somebody that was deputy mayor and then got more votes and then was not chosen as deputy mayor, or vice versa. Somebody that was deputy mayor didn't get as much busbar remained as deputy mayor. As far as mayor goes, as far as I know, it's only happened a couple of times in our history. So we run at large, which means we're a town of 64,000, over 64,000, approaching 65,000. And we run at large, and that's a big task. So we have two-year terms. We all cycle at the same time. And we have talked about having, you know, that, and we also are all volunteer. All of those things are part of our charter. And we have talked about opening our charter, and we have, the last time it was opened was in the mid-'90s. And so it's probably time to do it again in the, in the not-too-distant future. And some of the things that we have discussed were terms and some kind of compensation because people, we think it might be a barrier for some people to enter elected office that may need, when I joined the council a long time ago, I'd been on the council for 20, almost 20 years. I had a two-year-old, and he just graduated from law school a week ago. So that's a, that is time right before your eyes, right? So but luckily, I had some, an older child that was helpful in night meetings. But a lot of people don't have that, and it's expensive to hire sitters. And we're asked to attend so many community events, and some people can't do that with their, you know, within their budget. So we don't have stipends. So that's sort of a general overview. I don't know if you have questions for me, if there's more you want to know?
Are there any questions?
Do we want to do it that way?
She has to leave.
Yes, that's the only reason we're going to ask her questions right now, if you have any.
Sure, I do. Could you talk a little bit about how then the council interacts with your city manager and what sort of it means to have a city manager, what sort of division of responsibilities is there?
Yeah, that's key. I mean, the two major things I think that are responsibilities of the council is number one, choosing and overseeing a town manager, and number two is the budget. So those are primary, absolute primary responsibilities. So the town manager is hired by the council, and we, you know, we, we hope that it's a unanimous decision, that there's somebody that we really trust in that position. This particular, we've had many town managers that have served for a long period of time and have come from within, and either director of community development, this particular town manager, current town manager Rick Ledwith, was executive director of human resources for, he worked in human resources for 20 years, was executive director for the past 10. So we've had wonderful longevity. And there is a constant communication. And I think, being president of the council, I represent the council. And so most communications, in fact, when I first joined the council, and Barry Feldman, who I don't know if you know, but was a pretty historic town manager in Connecticut, he told me that anybody through, on the council should go through him before going to any staff member. So he would understand the requests, not that you can't talk directly to a staff member, but so that he was aware of it. And I have asked that of my council, not that they can't talk to staff directly or, but, you know, we all go through the town manager as a way to then speak to staff. So there is an understanding, and it's not a real management problem when you have nine people. And we understand we're advisory, right? We're a policy board. We are not a, we don't administer the town like the town manager, and all the responsibility administration lies with the town manager.
And then could you talk a little bit about your budget process, how the council handles that? Again, in relation to the council's responsibilities versus the town managers?
So the town manager, first, the superintendent presents the budget about a couple, maybe two weeks before the town manager's budget is presented to the council. And then once that budget is presented to the council, it then becomes, that's the town manager's budget, then it becomes our budget. And then we will break out into, and we've done it in different ways, but usually we have committees that we break into, that directors of those departments present their budget to the town council committee meeting, committee. And then we will have a general meeting, a finance meeting, for everybody to kind of put the pieces together before we then have our budget adoption night. We do have referendum opportunity, but we haven't had a referendum in probably 16 years or so, or 12 years, something like that. So it's been a while that we, so that's how that works.
Just a follow-up, if I may.
I think so. Can you come up to the podium?
Steve, why don't you ask your question?
Just a quick question, mayor, just to follow up to the majority leaders, and that is, so the council is the fiscal authority as well as the legislative body?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. My name is Brenda Penn Williams. I reside here in Norwalk. So you have a town manager and a mayor. What's the difference between a town manager and a mayor? And I understand as the mayor, you get elected and you select the town manager, but what are the duties?
So as I said, the board, I am the president of the council, and we are a policy board. We are elected to represent our residents, but we are, you know, we are really more like a board of directors in a corporation or an organization or an institution, a nonprofit, where you have an executive director that everybody reports to, the police chief, the fire chief, the public works director, you know, all of those people report directly to the town manager, not to the council. So then, you know, but the town manager responds to the council. We are his, you know, that he reports basically to us. We hire him. We choose his, we pick his salary. We do raises and we do reviews.
So you're basically like, like here, the common council, you're on the common council, but you're a mayor. Here we have a mayor who does what the town manager does. So that's a little different.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay.
It is. Yeah, I mean, that, most of the large communities in the state have, we call them strong mayors, but the mayors are executive directors of the town. And for us, we are more, we are, again, more like a policy board.
Just, I'm sorry, just to point out for the record, there are only two requirements in charter. And the charter, the charter requires a chief executive officer. And in your town, it is the mayor, could be a first selectman, could be a town manager. And West Hartford's chief executive officer is a town manager. The legislative body has, serves more like a board of directors as well as a legislative body, just in terms of the structure. And so I just wanted to emphasize that, and I've said this many times, your charter could be two paragraphs, setting up a mayor's office and a legislative body. Those are the only two actual requirements. A council member, I'm sorry.
Yeah, hi. Could you please define, from your perspective, what you see is the biggest benefit of your form of government? And what might be the, you know, the biggest challenge?
So the benefit, I think, is consistency and professionalism. When you hire a town manager, you're hiring someone that is, you know, they are trained to be in management and municipal government. So an elected official might not have that experience. And so that, to me, is, again, it's the consistency, and it shouldn't. And when I say that we, when we chose and we, we've selected a few town managers in my double 20-year-deck service, they have all been unanimous. I think it's very hard when you have a partisan position going in to selecting town manager. Town manager is not supposed to be political in any way. They answer to every, every council member in the same way. You know, they, communication goes through me, but, but they, you know, he should treat both, both are multiple parties, the same. As far as the, you know, the drawbacks of it, is you have a council, the perception is that I am the chief executive and that I, people report to me. And so when something goes wrong in town, or someone is, all the emails all come, many of them come to me. And so I think there's some lack of understanding on the public's, from the public's perspective, that we are, again, we are a legislative body, but functioning as a policy board and not actually, you know, picking up trash and, and having that, the directors report to us. The other thing I would say is, being an all-volunteer board, I think it is hard to recruit people, especially in the mayor position, because I do get invited to so many, to so many things to present and do a lot. It's a lot of time, and it's very hard to have another job and do, and do this right. And so I know that Simsbury moved from a strong mayor, you know, they had a chief executive mayor, then they hired a town manager and still had a mayor that was paid something. And I think that probably makes some sense in that configuration. I hope that helps.
May I ask just one more question? I think, I'm curious, when you imagine what you think of as a policy body and what your responsibility for policy is, could you say a little bit more about what you think those responsibilities? What are policy-setting responsibilities from your perspective?
So that's a really good question. In fact, we're having a discussion about something now, and I'll give you an example. So West Hartford Center is a very vibrant center. We, we have infrastructure, a lot of old infrastructure in the center, and we have determined, our staff has determined and told us that we need to spend money to repair that, you know, that infrastructure. The money, we have to decide, right? It has to come out of our budget. So we decided that we were going to appropriate some ARPA, some American Rescue money, to support the improvements of rebuilding of, you know, failing sidewalks, aging trees, curbing, all kinds of things. When, in discussions about that, staff advised that we take the opportunity, because it's going to be disruptive, to improve the center, expanding. We have outdoor dining with Jersey barriers, and they said, well, we think maybe if you expand the sidewalks, that could be a really good idea to do now, because it will be very hard to do at some other point. And making it more pedestrian-friendly, changing angle parking to parallel parking, losing some parking spaces. That is, you know, that's a decision that then, so it's actually an administrative decision, but the money that we would need to appropriate comes from us. So it's kind of a, you know, two-pronged, we have some control because we cannot appropriate the money, or we could appropriate a portion of it that wouldn't fund, you know. And the town manager talks to us a lot, and he doesn't want to go against how we understand things, we would like to see things work. But, but it's a, you know, there is a, you know, a conversation to be had. Any hires and fires and all of those things are all done by the town manager. If we are adding a position that's a budget impact, that would be a council. We would have input on that, right? If we were adding a position or, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If there are no other questions, mayor, I want to thank you very, very much. And I know you have other engagements this evening, and I.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Jim Frayer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Apologize. Councilman Frayer.
Thank you. Mayor Cantor, could you just talk a little bit about the budget process? I think you mentioned that you set up, where there are council committees that address the budget, and then there's a finance committee also that has, that looks at the budget. Explain a little bit about what is the process that those committees go through? And is the, does the, does the council actually set the budget? Or is it based, and I think you mentioned that two weeks before the budget process starts, that you have a, I guess, a pro forma budget that comes through, and that's, that's what's reviewed by the various committees? Just maybe you could expand on that.
Right. So the town manager spends a good amount of time, you know, months, really. And I would say it's probably all year long, like many town chief executives, in working on what your budget is now and what it's going to be, and planning for what's coming, right? So when the superintendent submits the budget to the town manager, the town manager will put that line item, because we only have line item powers, right, into the budget. And then he has been meeting with his directors, understanding any changes, any requests, whether it's, you know, police, managing police overtime, fire overtime, new equipment, you know, any, any request, public works, we're talking about a pay-as-you-through program. That's a whole nother discussion, but all, any of those changes will go to the, through those directors and then be incorporated into the town manager's budget. The town manager presents it at a council meeting by, set by charter. And we receive the budget, and then the budget is ours. And we, then the council committees will set up a number of, and we usually do this before the budget process fully starts, we'll set up a schedule, and all public meetings, obviously, where we go through each department, the public works, we have a public works department that will meet with our public works director, we have a public safety department that will meet with our fire chief and a police chief. We have a community planning department, economic development department, that we will meet with our community services director and engineers and a town planner to go through the details of the budget. And, you know, it's really up to the council committee and the council how deep they want to go and how much they want to question. Obviously, if there's been difficulties, we had a backlog in building permits. We received a lot of the complaints. The policymakers received a lot of the complaint, legislative body received a lot of the complaints on that. And we, you know, town management recommended that we go to an automated system and hire somebody to meet that backlog. So that went through an approval process by the council and included in the budget. So and then, you know, all the other pieces of the budget, obviously, you know, we approve contracts, we just, we just did that. That will impact the budget for going forward. But I don't know if that clarifies the process, if you need any more information.
So is it a lot, the approval would be a line item in the budget?
So the ultimate approval is the, all the pieces of the budget, including our capital budget. And then that, ultimately, and a line item for the schools, because that's by state statute. The councils do not have the ability or the legal right to go through line item in the schools. We might think, geez, there, I think that they have, you know, too many teachers in second grade or whatever, and class sizes are a little too low. That may be a thought that one, somebody on the council might have, but we cannot direct them. All we can do is say, you know, from that budget, we're going to appropriate, you know, $100,000 less or $2 million less, whatever that might be. And that will go into factoring the mill rate the night of budget adoption. We all speak, we have resolutions with the new mill rates in that, and also adopting the capital improvement plan for the next.
Who calculates the mill rate, then?
We have a CFO that calculates them. But I could.
So you would approve what the CFO has calculated?
So we usually, the night of presentation, the CFO will be there. And we have, we're not leaving it to the last minute. We're not usually, we haven't done this in a while, negotiated anything at the, at the table. We have a meeting a few days prior to the budget adoption, asking, you know, questions and saying, are there adjustments? Does anybody have any questions on it? And so before we get to the council, those resolutions have been, you know, they're, they're public, and they're, they are part of the package that is presented to the public. And, and people do come to the budget adoption, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you very much, mayor.
Thank you. I'm sure it'll be an informative meeting. Good luck. And if you have any more questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, okay?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank.
Sure.
And Ms. Dixon, can the record show that council member Seed joined, I believe, at around 7:15? Thank you.
So now what we're going to do is, we're going to go through each of the members of the panel. And I don't think I see Taisha Walker Myers. Taisha, are you there? I was looking through. I don't think she's called in. All right, so I'm going to, and what I'll do is, I know New Haven's Board of Alders very, very well. I represent them. I served on them for 10 years. So when we go through the Q and A, if I think there's anything that would be relevant, useful, I'll be happy to chime, chime in. But the first of the speakers is somebody I know quite well. He's the mayor of Wallingford. He is longtime council president of Wallingford. And while Wallingford is smaller, and Middletown is going to be here today, is a little smaller than Norwalk. They both have similar forms of government, council, mayor, forms of government. I thought it was important to have a community like Mayor Servoni's, Vinnie Servoni's community, because they have just gone through, and the mayor will tell us, I think the prior mayor was mayor for roughly 40 years. Am I correct on that, mayor?
Yes, you are.
Okay. And, and now we have a new mayor, but the mayor is also somebody who served as a council president under the former mayor. So I thought the dynamic of having served in that position and now serving as mayor, coming out of a long-tenured mayor, was, would be an interesting perspective for members of the body. And the other thing I want to say, and as a matter of bias on my, on my behalf toward Mayor Servoni, he was a lead guitarist in my band for many years. And if you ever want to talk about vintage guitars, he's your guy. So I'd like to introduce my dear friend and the mayor of Wallingford, Vinnie Servoni.
Good evening, Steve, and members of the council. Thank you for having me. Would you like me, at this point, to talk about Wallingford's charter?
Yeah, if you can talk about the, basically, the role of the mayor and the council, three to five minutes, and then we'll have everybody else speak, and then we'll have Q and A when it's all over.
So Wallingford's charter provides for a strong mayor and town council. The council is nine members elected at large. There is a minority representation provision, which provides that the minority party must have, I believe, at least three seats. The nine members elected of the council are at large, and the chairman of the council is elected by the council. There have been times that the chairman of the council was the high vote getter in the election, but that is not a requirement. Chairman was, is, is selected by. Um, chairman was uh is is selected by vote of the town council. I had held the chairmanship for ten years prior to running for mayor. The, similarly, the vice chairman of the council is also elected by the council. Uh, the council is a legislative policy and and uh works with the mayor to set the budget for the town. Um, the uh mayor uh has to present to the town council his proposed budget by April first uh in the calendar year before the fiscal year ends for the the July one uh fiscal year that's coming up. Uh, the council basically has six weeks to review it, to propose its changes to the mayor's budget. Um, by our charter, it has to be adopted by the second Tuesday in May by the council. And after the council's adoption, the mayor has an opportunity to veto the, the uh changes made to the budget by the council. Um, that's kind of a big picture way things work. Um, the mayor in Wallingford is this chief executive offer officer by the charter.
That's, that gives us a, a good perspective, thank you, Mayor, I'm going to uh now uh turn the table to a larger city. Um, and um want to recognize the assistant majority leader of the Hartford Council, TJ Clark. TJ has served uh in a number of leadership positions in the Hartford Council, I think he was president of the council for a while, majority leader uh and assistant majority leader, uh he has served through several mayors. Uh, and he will talk about uh their system of government, which is again a mayor council form, but slightly different, similar to Mayor Servoni's town at large, but he could talk about those dynamics for a few minutes and then uh he and the mayor and others will be open to question. Uh, council member TJ Clark.
Uh, good evening, everyone, I'm Steve, thank you very much uh for this also opportunity to speak about Hartford's charter as uh my fellow colleagues in uh Norwalk, Norwalk are are going through a similar process. Uh, and it is, it is a very exhausting process uh uh as well, so I don't envy you all, uh, we just uh wrapped up our uh charter revision process a couple of years ago. And we're still trying to get used to the new things that have are, uh, take, have taken place uh in the changes um in our charter. Um, what's unique about Hartford is that we have a strong mayor for our government. Uh, Hartford, once, they have a council, so city manager for our government normally back in two thousand and, two thousand, two thousand and three, I believe, is when uh it was voted to be changed, and uh so our mayor is the one that is the chief executive uh for the city of Hartford. Uh, and we have a council, there's uh nine, but nine members of our body uh that are elected all at large, uh that serves the city of Hartford, we do receive a uh compensation uh which is uh fifteen thousand a year uh for each member. Uh, the fifteen thousand uh is not predicated on whether you are um have a different leadership title, if it doesn't matter if you're a council president or whatever title that we come up with, uh, everyone gets compensated the same. And uh we have staff, uh, the council has at least nine members on staff, uh, we floated with the idea uh regarding doing a consolidated uh approach such as what New Haven has and what the General Assembly has on sharing council aids, uh, some of us do share aids, but all in all, uh, it is with our, uh, our chart and our purview uh that we have uh staff assigned to the uh council body and also to those of the specialized skill set as well. Uh, we do, we have a uh council president uh which is elected by the uh membership. Um, the council president's uh council presidency is not predicated on who has the highest votes, which is in sometimes uh cer- certain towns that is the case, uh, we have a majority leader. Uh, I am the assistant majority leader and now for this council term uh we just put back uh on the books a minority leader. Uh, we don't have any Republicans on the uh council, uh, we have two working family members, uh, one member of a, a new party called the Hartford Party and uh six Dems, and so our budgetary process uh changed under this uh new charter where the uh we meet twice a month, the uh second and fourth to, sorry, second and fourth uh Monday of every month, the uh second Monday is our public, uh, at six o'clock is our public comment portion, then we uh will reset, so there's time, and then we start at seven o'clock, on the fourth Monday, we start at seven o'clock. Uh, we have adopted the rule where we do either virtual or hybrid uh meetings, uh, and that's also too far committee meetings. And so uh the mayor on the fourth Monday uh presents the state of the city uh and also too, that is the day now that the mayor um submits the budget to the town and the city court. Uh, in our process is uh laid out that we have two public hearings. Uh, the, it takes place, the first one takes place uh fourteen days after the mayor submits the uh budget. And the second public hearing happens um right after we finish our budget uh budget hearings. All the department heads uh submit, uh come before the uh council. Uh, our budget is run by the operations management, the budget committee. Um, and uh, uh, all the department heads come present their, uh, make their case for uh their budget. Uh, we do a deliberation and then we have to, we go through that process of uh whether we want to take from one area and put towards uh another area uh based upon the public comment, public hearings and also to the uh uh the budget, uh department of budget hearings uh that the council has as that, as at all. We do have line item veto power, uh however, we cannot uh adjust any of the revenues that is set forth by the mayor. Uh, and the mayor also uh set forth the mill rate as a submission to the uh to the budget. Uh, and so all the other budget appropriations are something that we have to approve, uh, and uh, the mayor is the chief spokesperson for the city of Hartford. Uh, all the department head, what's also too unique about Hartford is that uh we have a chief operating officer. And so that chief operating officer could serve as the, you can view the chief operating officer as that city manager, because all the department heads who are appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the council, uh, report to the chief operating officer.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Councilman, uh TJ. Um, the next speaker is um a, also a longtime council member in Middletown, Gene Nacera has served on the council for many, many years, he's now the president of the council. Uh, again, Middletown is a small city, about the same size of Wallingford, they're neighbors and they have an at-large system, they just went through charter revision as TJ did the last couple of years, I think I was doing Wallingford and I say Middletown and Hartford simultaneously a couple of years ago. But Middletown went through some significant changes uh in terms of the composition of the council and um uh, I would like to introduce Gene to talk about his role and and the role between the mayor and the council, how that has evolved in the last few years. Gene?
Thank you, Steve and and members of the council. Um, yes, we, we did go through charter revision in two thousand twenty, I think it was, um and uh Steve was instrumental in uh helping Middletown achieve some significant uh areas that for years we failed to achieve uh the changes that we needed to to make. I was the former board of ed chair, and it was, was specific issue with, with board of ed that for years just was never resolved and apparently was. So I thank Steve for that, Middletown, like, like um Wallingford and Hartford, it, um, has a strong mayor, um, we supported that, we discussed that in our deliberations, um, our mayor presides at meetings, um, the regular meetings, I preside over uh all other meetings, special meetings and workshops and budget hearings and so forth, uh, we have a good relationship. That um is uh everyday communication, there is a chief of staff in, in Middletown that um it is important to carry out the duties uh that the mayor has. Like many of, of, of you uh who spoke, um, our mayor is the chief executive who uh handles uh the executive side of, of the government. Uh, we are the legislative body of twelve. Um, are, we're at large, uh uh, Middletown has um a charter rule that the eight highest Dems, uh, the eight highest vote getters, um if they are one party, that's uh the majority, then that's the, the most that can be on the council and the uh remaining four is the minority uh group. So it depends on what happens at the election, so it's an eight-four generally, um situation, um. We now have a president uh before the two thousand twenty uh charter, uh, we had just a, a majority leader and a minority leader. We now have a president and president pro temp. And, and we do have, uh, because the council, both of both bodies, those who was born to have a a minority leader uh and a majority leader, so we work as a team, the leadership team works together. We do our best to be as bipartisan as we can. It was a bumpy road at the beginning of this second term uh as president uh over some, some issues that uh we didn't expect, but they, they did, they did present themselves and um we worked it out. Uh, we had a difficult budget this year, um, as many towns had, had, and we had a very strong, very strong uh uh outpouring of very emotional hearings that uh we needed to uh trim back our budget that was getting too costly to live in Middletown, our, our tax rate was um unacceptable. And so that was difficult, we, we just finished that up, um. We, uh, something rare happened, um, the, the mayor vetoed our, the, the Dems budget. Uh, and we over, overrode the, the veto. Uh, we're talking again, the mayor and I. Um, but it, you know, it, it obviously um is why you have these uh procedures, because um, that's, that's how it should work. Uh, and so um the wisdom is there, it's real, it's real, and the rules are, are there for a reason. And uh we're in a better place, I feel now. People are feeling less wounded and um I've said to the mayor, you know, the art of uh negotiations. I guess, Mayor, is that um when both sides are unhappy, the, then good things happen, so. The one, anyone walking away that felt that they were, the winner here, uh we work together to uh make this happen, um, the um the the, the mayor um uh works with the, uh, the city council and I um, I support as president many of the activities. Uh, Middletown's a growing community, we're approaching fifty thousand now with some new developments that are pretty significant, housing. So there's a lot to do for the mayor, as everybody knows, and we help Mark to preside over things that in the community, uh, so that uh he's able to, to have a reasonable life. Uh, it, um, the budget process is uh very similar to what uh Mayor of Wallingford described. The mayor delivers the budget for the council to look at. But we deliberate over it, uh, we have line item control of the city budget, not the board of ed budget. Um, and um the, the, the process is extensive, uh, we have five budget, five to six budget hearings with um slowly, we, we get through all departments and, and uh review everything together and um deliberate on um what is reasonable and what is, what makes sense and what was forgotten uh from the council's point of view. So that's all I have to say uh um right now, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer them and um, I'd be glad to follow up with emails if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Gene, just to level set a little bit, what um, are you compensated on the council?
We are, we're, yeah.
How much?
We are compensated at a little over nine thousand apiece, just as I think Hartford indicated um, with their stipend, there's no differentiation, everyone receives the same compensation.
New Haven has differentiation for the record.
Yeah.
There is, um, and uh Mayor Servoni, does the council get paid in uh Wallingford?
Yes, the council here gets about six thousand dollars a year with um an additional stipend for the chairman that I think adds another five hundred dollars annually to the chairman's compensation.
Excellent, uh, thank you, I, I wanted to level set it, since somebody had mentioned compensation, I wanted to get that uh on the table. Oh, they're all compensated. Yeah, they're all different, they're all full-time jobs, Hartford, um, TJ, what is the mayor making Hartford, do we know? Oh, how is it determined? I can tell you in Hartford, or TJ, TJ, you want to tell?
Yeah, so the, uh, per our charter, the mayor's salary is not set, uh, to make it not political, it's set, um this consumer to the salary of a superior court judge. Uh, so right now, and that can fluctuate based upon what the state does in their budget, but the mayor's salary is close to about two hundred thousand dollars right now.
We did that in two thousand two because the mayor had not gotten a raise in many, many years, and we decided to take it out of the political process. And we keyed it to a prestigious position that people would object to, and and it also has cost of living um, uh, attached to it as well. And I believe that the compensation for the council is also subject to cost of living increases permitted by vote of the um uh, the referendum approving the compensation structure. Uh, Mayor Servoni, what is, how's compensation in Wallingford?
Uh, so the compensation in Wallingford for both the, the mayor and the council, um, as the charter is written uh is set with the budget in an election year. Um, the, the council uh compensation has been static for at least fourteen years, I made an attempt to raise it as the chairman uh, want to say four years ago, and uh the changes went away with a uh with a council modification to the budget, I think I tried again uh last year, and I think I was able to give them a raise. Um, the mayor's compensation is set with, with each election year budget, uh, currently it sits at a hundred thirty thousand dollars. That's for the first time um in about ten years where it was static at about ninety-five thousand dollars. And prior to that, it was static at about seventy-five thousand dollars, um because Mayor Dickinson refused to give himself a raise.
Um, legislative council, legislative representatives, legislative raises have to go to referendum by state law. Um, and uh so that's one of the reasons uh that those issues do not come up, uh, you can modify your budget, but you ultimately have to have that section of the budget approved by referendum uh under law in the state of Connecticut. Let me um, let me move on to our next two speakers, and then we'll have a lot of time for Q and A. Um, I'm gonna go first to um, uh, Tom McCarthy. I've known Tom uh for many, many years, Tom is a former president of the Bridgeport um, city council, uh, longtime member. One of the reasons I wanted Tom here, Tom's also a, um, a uh labor relations expert, he's working in Trumbull now, he's worked in New Haven, he's a um, a marvelous uh raconteur and, and labor relations expert, I guess you have to be a little bit of raconteur to be a good labor relations person, but the uh Tom served, as I under- But the uh Tom served, as I understand it, Tom, under four mayors, uh two of them being the same.
Three three actual mayors, but four different terms.
Four different terms, uh three different mayors, um and who who uh won, I think, at the beginning and end of Tom's term. And so I think that uh and Tom is also familiar as uh I think he was council president when we went through. A massive charter revision which failed.
Yes.
Uh eleven to twelve years ago. So I wanna introduce Tom to talk about the council, the role of the council, the dynamics. That he experienced in his years uh on the Bridgeport City Council.
Evening, everybody. Um yeah, Steve is right. We went through all the process and failed, but we'll talk about that if you want me to. Um so we have a strong mayor uh system of government with a council. Um the uh the council has twenty members. There are there are ten districts. So the in the Bridgeport City Council essentially run with a partner uh for those districts. The council president is elected from the body, um and it doesn't matter whatsoever about the number of votes. It could be anybody and uh I was council president for ten years and um I don't think I ever once had the most votes. And that's based on, you know, you in a big city, your district determines a lot of times how many people are coming out to vote. So um. So I was on the council for seventeen years, ten as the council president. So we have a strong mayor. Former government, but we 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 don't have a, we don't have a town manager, but what we have is a C A O, chief administrative officer. So. That person um does that role does the uh the day-to-day type operations, but. All the buck stops on the uh operation side with the mayor in in Bridgeport. But there is a C A O, like for instance, when we are in the budget process, the mayor has to submit his budget by a certain time, comes to the council, and the council. Uh reviews literally every single line over a period of uh two months and. Uh and then makes changes, but it's the C A O that actually does the presentations and the departments. Uh on the budget. It's not the mayor. The mayor only attends the actual budget vote. We have a weird anomaly in the in our world that the mayor runs the council meetings. Um although the mayor is not a member of the city council. It's kind of a weird thing and it's something that uh and every time there's a charter discussion, there's discussion about getting rid of that, but. Thus far, they have not gotten rid of that. So. Um also, the mayor, because the mayor runs the council meetings, the mayor can call a council meeting. Or he could not call a council meeting, which is a uh a a power that is um that was used. Um I it was Jill Gannon when he was reelected in in Bridgeport. I was still the council president and. We were on opposite sides of the last election and that was a power that he used, but so it's a. It was a, it was a tough little go there. And so I think when they redo their charter, that's gonna be something that's gonna absolutely change. Um cuz he's used it again in different times to allow the to not call meetings so that the council can vote on the budget. But if the mayor calls a meeting and there's a regularly scheduled meeting for it, the council has the right to change anything, revenue or expenses in the budget. During the budget process, and then they resubmit it back to the mayor, and the mayor has a line item veto. But it is not the the I call it the small level, uh small line item veto. It is only large line item. So he can't decide to get rid of um a line in the budget for uh an actual salary. But he can get rid of, he can change a salary line overall. So the council has the ability, the same type of control. We can't get rid of a a person. All the hires go through the the through the mayor administration, but we can uh but we can change the amount of money. If you take a hundred thousand dollars out of a salary line, someone's going out the door, that kind of thing. So that is the that is what the 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 control the council has in the budget. So weird thing in terms of an earlier charter change, it the mayor was a two-year term. And the council was a two-year term forever and ever, and they tried, and this was before, actually, I joined the council. They tried to change that multiple times to make it the mayor for your and the council for your term. And it failed two times and cuz it was a combined question for mayor and the council. And then they separated the mayor and the council, and then, of course, the mayor term passed for four years and the council did not. So the council is still on a on a two-year term and the mayor is is on a four-year term. Um that was a, it's a very interesting thing because, you know, one. One time you're running with a mayor's battle and a lot of people show up to vote, and then sometimes you're you're running as a council without a mayor leading the ticket. And very few people show up to vote. It is a very, it is a very weird dynamic. So um. Let's see, so it's had ten in total. Um the in terms of compensation, the the council in Bridgeport does not get compensated. That doesn't mean there isn't something there. There's a nine thousand dollar reimbursement for expenses. And um we have a a debit card that was set up uh when I was the council president. They still use. And so that's kind of the tracking system for reimbursements. Um and if you do something with the card that that it doesn't comport with your job performance, then uh you have to. You have to pay the town back or the city back for that. I will say that that nine thousand dollars, I believe, has been changed in the current budget that just passed in Bridgeport. Because it because it's a reimbursement for expenses, it doesn't have to go to a vote. But and so in the way the way it is written in the charter is is that. The amount of money is equal apportionment of money as determined by the council, the budget every year. It's just so happened that for like twenty to thirty years, we never changed the number. This year, they've changed the number, and to be honest with you, I don't even know what it is. I'm not in the council anymore. So um but they did up the number significantly. I think to maybe fifteen thousand or something like that. But again, a reimbursement for expenses, they have not gone down the road. Of having a salary or kind of any other kind of compensation for the um for the council members. Um if you don't mind, if and Steve, I don't know, do you want me to touch on the uh our wonderful charter experience together? Right now, or do you want me to wait a bit?
What do you want? Yeah, why don't you do it now, Tom?
Yeah, so so the Bridgeport uh charter hadn't been uh changed in a long time, and it was old and creaky. And needed to have changes um. And so we went through an entire process and Steve ran our process and we'd actually, I thought it was a very good process. It was. Um we, one of the big issues was um control of the Board of Education. We have, we had and still have a fully elected Board of Education. And there was a great desire, there was some dis- there was some significant dysfunction in the board event. I think everyone, even at any side, would agree to that eh at the time. And so um. So there was some desire to see about if you could uh if you could bring some function into the matter. We had been taken over by the state, the board, the Board of Ed had been taken over the state Board of Education. And they eliminated the elected board and they put in a appointed board. And in the time period there was an appointed board, there was, there was never more peace. And it was a very professional board, and it was very, it worked very well. And that led to the talk the talk of trying to maybe create a hybrid. Um of elected ver- and appointed for a Board of Education. And um we put, we got a lot of changes, a lot of them were insignificant changes that needed to be done just to make us function better. And the board was in one question um and the charter. That was the decision. And we were gung ho that it was going to be a hybrid. Until we had a guest speaker come in, and Steve knows, we had a guest speaker, I won't point out who it is, but this guest speaker.
We won't name names.
Was a was a significant mayor in the state of Connecticut who came in and.
Who ran for governor and lost.
What's that?
We won't name names.
Yes, right. He he came in and he did a great job, was very convincing. He convinced. Everybody, the charter commission, the mayor, everybody, not me, by the way, but everybody else has outvoted. To make it a fully appointed board and have no elected people on the on the board event. And so it went out as one question, and I think you probably know the answer. It got radically defeated because people organized very strongly. Against the council being fully, uh the board of ads, sorry, being fully appointed. Um and I think the 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 big takeaway is in my mind from that for charters, and number one. If you have a controversial issue, separate it from the dull stuff, right? Because in every charter, you have to do a lot of dull things that are gonna that are gonna update you to to twenty twenty four. They're gonna allow you to, you know, just operate better, right? Um especially in the world of hybrid meetings and things like that, right? Um so separate up the dull stuff from the the controversial stuff. And if you have very controversial stuff, give people a chance to say no to them individually. That's my lesson. And the last lesson I take from our failure in the charter was that um. You really need to listen to the people. The people were telling us at all our public hearings, they were screaming it from the mountaintops, don't do this. They would have voted, and I think Steve would agree with me, they would have voted for a hybrid in a heartbeat. But not, they wanted to have elected representatives on the board of ed, and so we did not listen. And we failed because of it. So those are, my advice is is that when they're screaming, you should listen.
Thank you, um. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. It's a horror story. The uh. I still think about it. At night. And so one of the reasons we're doing it the way we're doing it in Norwalk is we we had a a very uh. Uh temperate uh revision last year, and this year we're gonna be looking at the more difficult issues. Uh that was my lesson learned from Bridgeport so many years ago.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Um and the other thing is that you gotta worry about uh who who medic invites to meetings, uh because. That was uh uh my former mayor, John DiStefano, just for the record, it's a public record. He's a dear friend. I love him dearly. He's a good guy. I was his corporation counsel. Uh but John was a real vehement uh supporter of barrel control over boards of education and and that was a disastrous meeting. Uh Gene, you have your hand up?
You know, if I can follow up on on what. Um Tom just said uh in terms of your assistance yeah in Middleton, it um. Uh we were stymied for decades um eh uh on several issues. Um one one that um. Was seemed seemed insurmountable was um our board of ed. Non-certified staff was was supervised and hired by the city. And that became and they were unionized, and that became such such a difficult issue. For years because the. The uh employees um would play would play the city and the board of it against one another. And uh well, we don't work for you, board, and uh we work for the city. You know, that can sit so in essence, it sometimes occurred. And so um. We did finally, thank you, Steve, and that was one of several really key issues. Every town has different little wrinkles. That seem insurmountable to to get to move forward. We did um. Come up with a a good plan that I think really has worked out uh for the betterment of the community. When we moved um. We we talked about the strong mayor, uh the majority supported that approach. Uh a- and I did, of course, and uh I believe in that. What what the mayor feels wa- was really. A problem is the 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 mayor um. Is not, of course, a member of the council in Middleton, but presides over the regular meetings. I preside over uh everything else. Um and he in the previous charter, uh he had tiebreaker vote. Uh the council over issues, and that was removed in two thousand and twenty. Um and it did um come up come into play several times since then. And and while our mayor is um. No, wonders about the logic of that. Um you know, truly, you you know, it's a separation of power that that uh. Ultimately, it is for the betterment of of. Of the system, I believe, while sometimes, sometimes it, you know, it appears to be. Eh it makes for political um. Issues that are hard to navigate through, um it's it's pure and it's cleaner and it. We move forward uh with the executive branch and legislative branch. Um and and the uh the final one was uh term limits. Um in the previous charter, um we had a staggered mess. In Middleton, of mostly two-year terms. I think there might have been, I don't know, maybe they were all.
This is term limits for boards and commissions, not.
Yes, boards and commissions and the elected officials.
Well, we don't have term limits for elected officials and.
Well, they're four-year terms, eh I mean, I meant to say.
Four-year term, okay.
Four-year terms, I I apologize. So we. The original plan was um two-year terms and we. We moved to with Steve's assistance to all four-year terms so that. Um and we did have to adjust so that we could get everybody on a four-year term. But what that did the uh solve to a great degree is the fluctuation, as Tom just indicated. In voting, when you have to, when you have a a mayor not running with the council, it you you know. It it loses interest in significance and and that's that's a problem. You know, today and well, voter turnout is everything we can do. To uh enhance that and to strengthen that, we should, we should be very careful not to do things that. That run counter to to getting uh our people out to vote. Um so tho- those were three things that um. Come to mind, Steve, that um it was a long. Uh difficult process. We tried to tackle the the things that. The low-hanging branches that we we knew we could, and then we tackled the ones that took a lot of time and. Careful negotiation. Not everybody is happy, of course. That's a good thing, I think.
Yeah, thank you, Gene. Our last speaker, and then we'll have it opened for questions um. Uh is Chris Anderson. Chris is a former assistant minority leader um of the New Britain Council. Uh the reason I asked Chris, and uh I've just met Chris uh through uh some of my good friends in New Britain, um is. New Britain uh moved in in recent years from an at-large system to a district system um. And um most interestingly, from my perspective. Um New Britain is a very competitive political environment where you have. Members of opposite parties controlling different branches. Right now, there's a Republican mayor with a Democratic majority on the council. Uh that could occur. Uh it's not too long ago that you had a Republican mayor in in Norwalk, so that could occur in a place like Norwalk. And so I thought it'd be interesting to hear from somebody who has to live. In a more competitive political environment, not a environment where one party has clear control uh over the other party. And so it's my pleasure to introduce uh Chris Anderson to all of you.
Uh thank you, Steve, and thank you, council, for having me. Um so the New Britain Common Council is a fifteen-member council. Um we used to be, um we've we've made a lot of changes, actually, over the last twenty years. The charter has been redone over and over again. Um during that time, uh twenty years ago, it was all at large with minority representation, and during that time. Democrats um controlled uh supermajority generally on the council, even when there was a Republican mayor. Um after that year, um uh after we had all at large, we switched to a hybrid system where five were at large. And ten were in five wards, and I think that's what you all have now. Um and under that, there is no minority representation requirement. And so. Um at the beginning, we tended to have uh democratic supermajorities, even with a Republican mayor. Um but towards, um you know, as the years went on, it started to sort of ratchet back, ratchet back and forth between uh democratic control and Republican control. And then um being much tighter in the margin so that there wasn't a supermajority on the council. Um and now we just switched in twenty twenty-two for the first time in the last municipal election, twenty twenty-three. It's a five-ward system where three are elected for each ward with minority representation in each ward. Um and one interesting thing about the way that it was done is that um. Voters only get to pick two of the three. Um in many places, you would get to vote for all three. And that would enable third parties potentially to pick up seats in, you know, districts that swing more liberal or more conservative depending. Um but that's not possible in New Britain. You would have to sort of cannibalize your own party's votes to partner with a third party to try to pick up a seat. So it's not, it's not realistic. Um and the the uh the short of that is that we essentially don't have. A path to supermajorities in New Britain anymore, and I think that was the true intent of that charter change. The flip side of that is we have a very strong mayoral system in New Britain. Um it used to be much more balanced. Um, it used to be much more balanced, but again, over the last twenty years, uh, via charter change and via ordinance change, when, um, the, the Republican Party in our case had, um, a supermajority or just a strong enough majority, they sort of whittled away power from the common council. And so now it's sort of a, a fragment of the power that it used to have. Um, the, the strong mayor is the chief executive, does all of the hiring and firing, all of the day-to-day. And the council is intended to be, um, the legislative body, which it is, and then it's also intended to be the budget body. But in New Britain, um, just like most of the other towns, um, that have the strong mayor system, the mayor proposes a budget, and then the council has the opportunity to edit it. Um, in New Britain, if the council is not able to adjust the budget, either they just can't make up their mind and agree, or because the mayor vetoes the council's, um, adjustments, the mayor's budget automatically goes into effect. And so what that means is that unless the council has a supermajority or the parties are willing to collaborate and override the mayor's veto, the mayor's budget is the budget. And so the six weeks of process that New Britain has, um, and the opportunity to, to change the budget, it's, it's, you know, unless you have a supermajority, it's kind of a, uh, a fundamentally flawed operation that, that, you know, a road to nowhere. Um, we, uh, so, so what that leaves is that the coun- the, the council, although we have a, a majority on the council now, again, not a supermajority, they really only have, um, control over bonding because that does require, um, a majority vote that originates from a council. Uh, the council has the ability to open up the charter, again, only if they had the tenth vote. Um, and New Britain did an interesting thing in the last charter change where it automatically, um, opens up every five years, I believe it is. So a commission is created every five years so that, you know, a, a majority party can't hold it hostage. Um, and, um, and then on major expenditures, the, the council has to approve over a certain dollar amount. Um, one of the, the biggest weaknesses, though, that I've seen from when I served on the council, and now that I'm, I'm the chair of the Democratic Party here in New Britain, so that, you know, I'm deeply involved in, in the day-to-day of, of what the council does in, in that regard, sort of, when it's an advisor, is that, um, the, the flow of information is, is so strong through a strong mayor's office that it is often very difficult for the council to do its legislative or, you know, sort of fiscal job, uh, because it doesn't have steady or ready access to the information that it needs. Um, we have fifteen members of the council, like I said, they are compensated. Um, when I served, it was about thirty-five hundred dollars a year with a little bit more for the council president. And, um, I believe it's, it's five thousand now, although I'm hearing for the first time from Steve that I believe the, the the council did it wrong because it didn't go to the voters. Um, they just raised their own salary. Um, so that's an interesting thing. Um, and the count, the other, the other, uh, unique thing about New Britain compared to the other cities of our side is that our council only has one staff person for all fifteen members, and is, that staff person also does all of the sort of administrative clerical stuff related, and then all of the sort of the extra stuff, serving both parties. And we have, um, we, the, the council has the ability to set a line item budget for legal help or audit or financial help or, or any other kind of advisor. But again, if you don't have ten to, to put that in the budget and the mayor of the opposite party doesn't agree with that, there's no realistic path to sort of getting that, that structural help. And so what that means is that you have to take the mayor's staff, um, including the, you know, the finance director and others, um, at their word often, you know, there's no real way to sort of fact-check or verify through a third party. And if you believe, as has happened, um, during this mayor's term, if you believe that there has been a violation of either the charter or the ordinances, there is no realistic path, uh, to legally challenge that because that's not work that any lawyer would do pro bono, and the council doesn't have the ability, um, via the budget, um, to, to hire their own lawyer. And so that is, um, something I would definitely sort of flag, uh, for you all, is that if you, if you want to, um, have a balanced system that has the ability to be bipartisan, you have to really structure that in, um, fundamentally in the charter to the way that, um, the bodies interact with each other. And, and I think it has to be in the charter versus the ordinances, because again, you just get a, you get that majority on the, on the, uh, the council and a, a part, a mayor that agrees, and you can change the ordinances in a heartbeat, whereas the charter obviously is, is much more difficult. Um, New Britain also, in the last charter, we just, um, uh, approved a, um, chief operating officer, um, position which hasn't been filled. I, it's my understanding, they, um, they've gone through two rounds of hiring and they haven't found somebody to fulfill it yet. Um, it's not, it's not changing from a strong mayor. It's maybe somewhat like Bridgeport or Hartford, but it essentially, it's just sort of a blanket position that the, the, our mayor would get to hire to offload whatever duties the mayor decided to offload onto this person. And I, I, I was very skeptical, as, as many others are of that position. Uh, but I don't have, you know, the day-to-day of how, how that, uh, how that would work out.
Thank you, Chris, members of the council. There are yours. Any questions?
Um, thank you all so much. This has been incredibly informative and really fascinating to see bits and pieces of our system in different places and bits and pieces of things that are very different from ours. Um, I think because staff just came up a little bit, um, uh, in the last conversation about New Britain. Uh, I think several of you mentioned, but can we just confirm? So New Britain has one staff for the council. Hartford has nine staff for the council. What do the rest of you have, uh, as council staff?
Um, now, Middletown has, has a council clerk, of course, um, uh, full-time, uh, who handles, uh, all, all of our quests and, um, the president is, uh, and President Pro Tem is instrumental in working with her every day and developing the agenda and making sure everything is, uh, communicated properly to the rest of the council. So we have a, we have a staff person, uh, and an office.
Wallingford?
Oh, sorry. In Wallingford, the, uh, town clerk is the staff support for the council. Uh, for many years, the council had, um, its own full-time secretary, and I want to say in twenty sixteen or twenty eighteen, with the retirement of the secretary, the council now, uh, relies upon the town clerk's office as its administrative staff.
Bridgeport, Tom? You used to have an office, but I don't think it exists anymore.
Right, we, we had a, we had a legislative office and we had the city clerk's office. City clerk is really the, by charter, our staff to, to the council, and there's five people who work in there, but we added one legislative person to that office, um, whose job is to do, you know, proclamations and can you research where, you know, the pothole on that street, that kind of stuff. So there's like a constituent services type person in that office, and the rest of the staff, um, or the, the city clerk's office really staff us, but they have other clerk duties as well because they're the record keepers for the town, for the, for the city.
Uh, I can tell you, New Haven has, uh, since the late nineteen-sixties, an office of legislative services that has at least nine employees, and they are appointed, they're, uh, assigned as subject matter experts to the standing committees of the Board of Alders, and they're not partisan. Um, they may help with some constituent work, uh, uh, um, but, and they have a director who's been director for a long period of time. Uh, Waterbury has none, this is, I might as well go through some of the other cities I know pretty well. Waterbury has no staff, it's the city clerk that really staffs, uh, the Waterbury, um, Board of Aldermen. And, um, Camden, um, again, a smaller city, but not so small. Uh, Hampden has, um, two staff people, not, uh, more of a clerical, clerical nature. Uh, but they also have council to the council. They have a, an actual position in the charter, um, and, and that is me. Um, it serves as the legal advisor to the council. Um, and it's very, it's, it's a very interesting role that I play with the city attorney, the town attorney. And, and we've been doing it for about twelve, fourteen years together. Um, those are the cities I know the best.
So I had a question. Uh, no, you're done? No, I've got many more, please. And, and this might be something that you have, so we kind of just said, you just said, Steve, about, um, having, um, someone from law, legal, um, assigned to us to really help us work through things, but the question I have too, and it just, something that we've talked about, the strong mayor system and how does that really work, and what can you expand on that a little bit? Because it seems that every, but most of you define that, what that really means for, uh, for you all. Give some examples of what that looks like.
If I can, um, so in Wallingford, that means that, um, that like some of the other municipalities who spoke, i- in order to overturn an action of the mayor, overturn a, or overturn a veto, the council needs, uh, seven out of the nine votes. So it, and the majority of the council is capped at six. I, I said minority representation earlier meant, um, minority, minorities guaranteed three. The, the way our minority representation works is that the majority is capped at six. So if you have, even if you have all one party in majority, the, the one party in majority needs one more vote to overturn an action or, um, veto of the mayor. And here in Wallingford, the mayor is the, the CEO, um, directly hires all the department heads and supervises them. Thank you.
And, and if I could add, um, of any to that, um, the strong mayor in Middletown, it, it, um, was, uh, unanimously, I think, at, at charter, um, supported. Uh, and I, I feel that for, for reasons that, that, um, sometimes when, when um, a city adopts a manager form, form of, um, a government, a manager mayor, um, situation. Um, as was, was indicated earlier, there, there's a perception in the community that, well, what does the manager do? What does the mayor do? And, um, the strong mayor, it, it makes it clear that he is the chief executive officer. And there's a, um, there's a legislative branch that, um, um, and there needs to be a balance of power, a clear balance of power between the two. But, um, the everyday, um, everyday operation is on this, on the executive side and, and the chief executive officer is, is the mayor. Um, having that mayor preside at the meetings, though symbolically, I feel personally, and I think others do, um, represents, um, unity that the community by and large understands and supports. They see the mayor there, uh, communicating with the council and deliberating on issues, and, and that's important. Uh, the clear and timely communication is very important. And that, that occurs in that set, in that type of arrangement, more so when it's, when it's maybe a little bit more confusing. Not to say it's.
Hartford is the same.
Managers aren't important, because they are. Go ahead.
Hartford is the same way, uh, with the, the nine members, uh, we are able to, uh, veto anything the mayor does, uh, sorry, override a veto of anything that he, uh,
Right.
uh, provides a veto to. Uh, we need seven members of our, um, of our legislative body, uh, to override his veto. Um, when there's a general election, you know, the one major party, which are the Democrats, only able to, uh, have six, and so all those that will fall under the minority category, uh, those top three uh, get to be, uh, placed on, uh, the council. The mayor does not preside over the city council meetings, uh, our, per our charter and our council rules, but, uh, the council president, uh, provides over the, uh, city council meetings. The majority leader, which is the President Pro Tem, uh, fills in that space in absence of the, uh, the council president, and then the assistant majority leader will move up to the, um, uh, to the role of the acting majority leader, if that, if, if that happens, uh, to be. But again, the buck stops with the mayor, um, and then the mayor works with the council. But all decisions, all contractual, uh, negotiations are handled, uh, out of the mayor's office, uh, with, uh, his, uh, corporation counselor. Now, also, Jeff, sorry, what's unique, because, uh, Steve, uh, sparked something I have regarding the council, to the council. The city, Hartford City Council does, uh, have in our powers to have a council to the council. So even though we have a corporation council, who was appointed by the mayor, uh, and, and serves at the pleasure of the mayor, uh, we are allowed, and at a couple of times, uh, during my, actually, one time, in my, actually, two times, two times, uh, the council has experience of having a council uh, to the council, and we can decide whether that is a, that would be a full-time position. Uh, when it was first created, there was a full-time position with benefits. Uh, the second time that, that the council had a council, uh, it was on a contractual basis.
And if I can add, that was added, um, to our charter, um, everything you just described, council to the council in two thousand and twenty. And, um, you know, I, I strongly believe in, in that approach. Um, it has proven itself, um, in, in many, many situations, and I, and it's not that the council is, is trying to nitpick or to, to, um, uh, challenge for challenge's sake, but because there are issues that come up that you really do need, you know, a second opinion. Um, and the council should have that authority and should have a line item in their budget to, um, and, and that's how it's handled in Middletown. We have a line item in our budget to, um, to seek, um, a, a second opinion, um, or, or additional support on an issue. And it, it has been very beneficial. Thank you.
Um, I see Mr. Frey, oh, I'm sorry.
If I could just, just very quickly, the Bridgeport has a, this has been a battle in Bridgeport for a long time. Um, even when we're friendly with the mayors, there's still a battle about council. Uh, the, we, the council has a fund, it's created a fund where they can hire outside consultants for various things, and they can do it, they can hire whoever they want, whenever they want, with one pretty major exception. There is language in the Bridgeport Charter that says that the, the court, the, uh, city attorney, because that's what we call the corporate council in Bridgeport, the city attorney has to approve who is hired for any legal advice in the town, in the city, period. So, so it kind of takes the, it takes the wind out of the sails for the council.
We, we've put provisions in some of our charters, and I think Gene's charter has it, I know Hampden's has it, is that they have the ability to go out and hire council, but it has to not be approved by the corp council. They have to be able to review to make sure that outside council doesn't have a, a situational conflict uh, with the city. Um, and so that is the very limited ability, uh, to restrict that ability. Just want to make that point, because, you know, Bridgeport has a fairly strict standard.
Yes.
Mr. Freyer has his name.
Uh, yes, um, I want to go a little deeper on, um, the strong mayor concept. And I think in Hartford, um, we just heard that he, he negotiates all contract, contracts with outside vendors, and I assume that you mean he and/or his staff. He has the ultimate responsibility for it, but staff negotiates those things. Um, to what extent does the council get involved?
Uh, the, uh, good question. The council would get involved when there needs to be a, a legal approval of, uh, of such contracts, uh, that, uh, there is a limit, I believe, of twenty-five thousand dollars and above. So anything twenty-five thousand and above, uh, the mayor would have to seek, uh, um, a consent from the council in form of a resolution, uh, and that typically deals with also two development deals. If there's somebody coming in to want to do a tax collection agreement, tax abatement, or enter into some type of contract, uh, multi-million dollar contract, uh, with, with, uh, with the city, uh, that is something legally that the council would have to weigh in.
They, they would also have to, they'd also have to weigh in on multi-year agreements, um, which is already in the Norwalk Charter as well.
Right.
And, and.
As far as, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, just, the same thing in Bridgeport, the, the, the key, though, is that, um, the contracts and all kind of contracts are negotiated by the strong mayor and administration, and the council can only do a, a yes or no vote. Can't change a contract, can't amend a contract. It's a yes or no vote. Can't change a contract, can't amend a contract. It's a yes or no vote.
But as far as. Uh I was gonna say, as far as negotiations, investigations of uh verifying the the the. The vendor and and so forth, everything that goes up to uh. Signing of the contract would be the responsibility of the mayor and. And actually probably the chief of staff or the C R, the COO or uh the staff themselves. Is that right?
In in Middletown, we we have um we have. Committee uh representation at all the major major departments. And in our financing government uh finance office, we have five members of the council meet monthly. Uh on all the financial matters uh and they um. The majority party has three and the minority party has two members. And they they vote on all all contracts that that are uh presented. Um um all the financial matters, all the expenditures. Uh that are coming through monthly are voted on and then sent on to the council for a second vote. So there's a, there's um. The, there's a dual process in Middletown, so there. There's, there's definite scrutiny and and um our mayor's office sometimes gets frustrated. Because it can, things can slow down and could end up in committee um. For a couple of months and go back to committee. Uh because there's questions, but uh in in the end, there's um, there's uh. Clear accountability that the council is about. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And what, just to, just to back that up, we're in Bridgeport, it's a committee-run system. So we have a a council at large, but everything is automatically sent to a committee. You have to have a two-thirds majority vote of the council, full council if you're gonna skip committee. So it has to go through that committee process, just like Gene was mentioning. And this is where one of the real big powers of uh of uh of a Bridgeport City Council comes from. Is that once it goes to the committee, aside from collective bargaining agreements, which have statutory. Uh time limits that you have to vote by. Other than that. Um the you can go and it can go into a committee and never come out. They don't ever have to take action on it. They can keep it in there forever if they want. So. That that is one of the big powers that the council has in Bridgeport.
Okay, good.
Hartford has a very good committee process. Um I've seen a lot of time, you know, we, I'm not sure how long everyone's uh council meeting takes place. Depending on what's on the agenda, hours can be very uh short at times, so that's because. Most of the items that are submitted on the agenda um are automatically after our, from our actions, I'll refer to. Uh a committee and so that's where we can decide whether to uh discharge it or keep it for. We know what whatever reasons uh there has to be a two-thirds vote out of uh to discharge an item out of committee. Uh without actually going through the process. Uh and so, I mean, I've seen it work very handedly uh uh. You know, for our side, depending depending on what the actual uh matter is, but like Tom said, with any of the CBAs. Uh we and and also too with the mayor's appointments, who has department heads. Um for our charter, we have sixty days uh to confirm uh uh the the appointee. And there has been one time in my experience, and this is my third term on council, we have four uh four-year terms. Where one of the department heads was was automatically confirmed because the council uh had neglected its responsibility to. Do a hearing for uh that department head in a timely manner.
Let me, Chris has a comment. Chris Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. So while we're on um. The the subject of committees in New Britain, I I'm not sure what it is in other other towns. There are, there are a chunk of things by charter or ordinance that have to go to committee and there are a chunk of things that don't. Um but everything starts on the council floor. So we have a really convoluted system where you you bring it up on council, refer it to committee. The committee does whatever it does, including letting it die in committee, then it sends it back to the council for the council to vote. Um it would be much more efficient to start those things in committee. That need to start in committee, um the way that it does in the legislature, the way that it does. In the Board of Ed in New Britain and and other places, for example. So consider that, you know, committee structures are great. Um but they can, and and in Britain, by the way, they were, our committees were set up intentionally to slow things down. That's why it is the way that it is. It was Democrat, the Democratic supermajority had a Republican. You know, mayor and they set up the system intentionally to sort of blow the mayor down. Um but it's, it's, it's not the right way to do uh to do legislating or or policy. Um the other thing that I wanted to bring up is that um in contrast to sort of what what you're hearing from Middletown and Hartford. And in in Wallingford, is it um? Is it, is the, is the mayor and the majority the same party there?
Yes, and um has been for most of the last forty years.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think generally across the state, that's most common, right? These things tend to swing together, but Danbury and and New Britain are examples of places where that just wasn't the case for a number of decades. And so we have a, we have a mayor that presides over the council, even though um. He is not a voting member of the council, except in tiebreakers. And that causes problems because then it it often seems like that's the mayor's meeting and not the council's meeting. Um because corporation council works, is appointed by and works for the mayor. If there is a uh a decision that has to be made on Roberts Rules of Order, for example. Um typically, the mayor will just uh defer to her council and if if the counter and to her corporation council. And if if it's the the common council majority isn't savvy enough, they might not know the steps to override it and that often happens. And certainly, if you have our, you know, a minority party. Um you know, if it was a Republican majority with a Republican mayor, the the minority party would have no ability to sort of. Challenge actual procedural problems, um which which is something to think about too. Um so we, we, you know, we have the strong mayor that she negotiates the contracts, she negotiates um the union contracts. A lot of that comes back to the council for a yes or no vote. But union contract in particular, it's really, the council doesn't need to vote because by the time it comes to the council, it's a negotiated contract. So should the council say no? It's gonna go to arbitration anyway. And so there's, you know, there's no involvement in a lot of these processes at the point where a council could. Could make a difference and some of that might be governed by state law. I'm not, I'm not the person to know that. Um but but you know, the the what I would, what I would say is, you know, just be cautious about assuming that. Things will always flow together with the the council and the mayor being the same party. Because when they don't, all of the stuff that works well in other towns breaks down. In in a very fundamental way and it it it's created a bigger divide in our community, more partisanship in our local politics. And that's something that often we avoid in local politics as compared to, you know, the Congress, which is famously partisan. Um but it's very, very difficult now in New Britain sort of for anything to happen that isn't blessed by the strong mayor. And um I think there's things that I already talked about that could have been done to sort of avoid that. Um just to sort of share the balance of power. So just again, just consider that as you're, as you're making your changes.
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with Chris uh uh in early in his statement. Uh in terms of the the procedure in in place. Um years ago, Middletown did have things start at the council level. But when you, when you have a clear system that that that's uh that that can can really slow things down. Having committee system where it moves through committee and onto the council, not not vice versa. Uh it it improves um efficiency and that's what we've, we've tried to to adhere to it. And and almost every case and and um we have a procedure and it. It goes on to financing government um. For and we discuss the costs and and the contracts or whatever the issues are. And then goes on to council for a second vote.
Yeah, so here in Norwalk, we have um a board of estimate and taxation that really um is is in control of the purse strings. Um that board is appointed. They are the board that uh meets with all of the uh chiefs to hear their budget, budgetary needs. The common council sets the cap, but the board of estimate and taxation, you know, really has the final say. I didn't hear any of you talk about a body um such as that. Um and so I just wanna hear does and did I miss something or was something neglected? Or um you know, I I just wanted to hear a perspective on.
Let me just interpret chiefs are like department heads and coordinators. And so it's not the police chief and fire chief.
That's what we call.
Going Hartford, um. Uh it it's how it's run. So we have a director of finances, also a chief financial officer. Uh we have a uh budget director who manages the uh 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 budget office, which is the operations management. Budget and grants and under the, and so the budget director works with the finance director. On all things related to the uh to the budget. Uh we have a tax collector and tax assessor. Uh who helps out with the low rate and then the tax levy. Uh who those two individuals work under the, their unionized positions and they work under the finance director. Uh so all, so they are the ones that uh look at the finances and helps the mayor to craft that budget and uh. I think correlates to what you, what your question that you were just asking there. So uh that's all controlled under and supervised under those uh uh two department heads and those two division heads.
We have all of those positions as well.
In in um in Bridgeport, there is no separate board of finance or assessment. I think all of that is done. The power is in the city council. So the city council is a budget committee that that performs that role. So we would set the budget, define, we would set the final budget, you know, depending the veto of the of the mayor. And also when the, when the mill rate, we'd set the mill rate as well.
And Middletown is exactly as you just described, we have no separate. Board of Finance. Everything moves through Finance Department. This is the air to us.
New, New Britain does have a separate board of finance and taxation, but it's a vestige of decades ago. Um it is uh appointed by the mayor, it is a purely advisory board. Um but it it still creates three, three or so months of work for our uh department heads and 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 the council and the mayor. To sort of go through and um go through the process, the board of finance and taxation will recommend a budget. It is always, at least in the last, you know, since I've been paying attention in New Britain, it's, it's always twenty million dollars or so more. Than what is actually going to be proposed by the mayor. And so the mayor always gets to say, hey, I cut taxes, but not, or I I cut spending. But not really, because you're not comparing apples to apples. So if if Norwalk was to move away from what you have. I would definitely recommend not creating a powerless vestige of it that creates the appearance of. Uh public input when there really isn't none, because in New Britain, the only thing that matters is the day that the mayor proposes the mayor's budget. And then the clock running down until the the council's final approval. And so anything before the mayor's proposed budget is really, in my opinion, is a waste of sort of time and uh energy.
We've got a lot of questions. Do we wanna go to the audience?
Yeah, so we want to definitely go to the audience. John, go to the mic.
Thank you, uh John Levin from Norwalk. Um I have two questions, one for uh Chris Anderson from New Britain and the other for uh Attorney Mednick. Uh Chris, I am surprised that the multiple charter revisions that New Britain has had. Um has had the effect of removing so much. Power and authority from the the city, from the town council. Uh I'm guessing you did not have the wise counsel. Of Attorney Mednick uh during these charter revision processes. But nonetheless, I I'm just sort of stunned to hear your stories. Um it seems that if you have a uh a mayor that is determined to. Uh starve the council of both information and resources. Um are there any levers that are available? Um I would think just stepping out uh of the role of council, couldn't you do FOIA requests? To get sufficient information uh from uh the city administration to to get the information that the council feels it needs. That's uh my first question for Chris.
Sure, so um so Attorney Mednick was not involved in the most recent sets of charter change. I believe he did one in New Britain under Lucian Pavlock, which was more than twenty years ago. Um and uh the.
I was a little boy, I was a little boy, had dark hair. And I have a Methuselah beard.
All of the charter changes that have happened under um in the last twenty years and especially the two that I believe happened under the current mayor. This is her her sixth term. They have all happened um when. Uh the mayor and the uh the council had a majority, uh often a super majority. Because like I said, it ratcheted back and forth. So the moment they had the power to open up the charter, they opened up the charter, they pulled away. Um some more power from the council, handed it back to the mayor. And often what they did too is when, when those questions hit the voters, they would wrap them all into sort of one ambiguous question. So it was not clear what they were voting for and that's what happened in um. The last charter revision, there was two questions. One was, do you wanna change from the current system to the new system of voting for council? And then the other question was, do you wanna, do you wanna approve all the other recommended changes of the Charter Revision Commission? Don't do that uh because that included adding the chief operating officer, that included. Uh taking two elected oppositions, the clerk and the tax collector and making them appointed by the mayor. Um and so you you know, it's very, very interesting. Um so be wary of that. We didn't have Steve Mednick. Uh in in terms of the FOIA, yes, it's a process that we we can do and we have done. But it's not a timely process because there are many, many ways that the administration can delay that. Um and uh and it's, it's just, you know, it's just not necessary. The the current majority in the council um tried to pass some transparency resolutions. Uh related to uh contracts. The 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 mayor will begin the process of negotiating a contract. And I'm thinking that this, this is uh mostly related to, includes union contracts, but it's also like. The purchase, the sale of property or lease or something like that. Then the the mayor will start the process there, but it then does have to come to the council for approval. To sort of give the mayor the ability to negotiate the the final details of that contract. Often the the council will say yes, and then what happens is we never hear again. So we've never seen many of the final contracts. So we, you know, in the, in the last uh couple of years, the mayor gave twenty-seven year tax breaks to some developers of luxury apartment housing. And the council has never, to this day, seen those um those contracts. And one of the reasons that the mayor cited in vetoing the council's automatic request for reports back. Was you could just Freedom of Information Acted. There's already a process for that, so we don't need, we don't need to make it easy and uh transparent. So um yeah, we could do it, but it's, it's just, it's no way to run a government.
Okay, interesting. Thank you. Um then my second question is for Attorney Mednick. Uh what is the next step for Norwalk in the process of charter revision?
Well, I'll defer to the members of the council. I think they're going through this pre-charter process right now. There'll be another session in July dealing with the the budget process. And then there'll be one final uh session early September. Dealing with the executive imbalance of power issues, some of which we heard tonight's inseparable. It's hard to uh segregate it completely. And I believe sometime, whether it's August or September, they will begin the process of creating a new charter commission. And that charter commission will operate uh through the fall, the winter into the spring and about this time next year. Will be reporting out for the ballot in twenty twenty-five. Um and that was mandated by the last charter. And I, and I know the majority leader has a lot of questions.
Yeah, but I don't wanna take up. Does anyone else have um, Mister Johan, do you have um have questions, Mister Satten? No. Have any questions?
Um well, I I know I'm wanting to be very cognizant and respectful of people's time. Um. Could you maybe just speak? Um I don't wanna get too philosophical here, but I do think it's very interesting hearing sort of the, both the similarities and the differences. Um what do each of you think is sort of the most important kind of function of? A legislative body, you know, what is the, what are the core powers that you think? A legislative body, you know, what is the what are the core powers that you think a legislative body should have and should? Really be striving to to protect and and use sort of for their residents.
I would say, please, by all means, do not. Give away your authority that you have now. Not even in England, it is very important. And I consider myself institutionalist and. The legislative body is a powerful body. And it should not lead out of respect to the executive branch, should not yield this power away to the executive branch. To have full control and you then alter the balance of power. You know, in Hartford, we have three branches of government, which I haven't even touched on. We also have a treasurer. Who handles the pension and other things related to the office of the treasurer. And she is duly elected as well, and so we have three branches of government here. The treasurer and the mayor are co issuers of debt. The city is not able to bond unless the mayor and the treasurer are in agreement to do so. So as you are considering with the balance of power, it looks like. Make sure that you are looking at the best interest of yourselves and also to your constituents. So that they can trust that, you know, you're making the decisions on their behalf for their best interest. You know, especially when it comes to the budget process. That's where the council really has a lot of control and authority and. By all means, do not use that use that away, because the moment that you do that. Maybe the next time you may go through this process, then there will be probably an attempt to weaken the the powers of the council. Even even more so.
And I, you know, I would like to agree with you, TJ, on that. And you know, that's so important when when the charter is set up. You clearly have to be be thinking of every situation that that may present itself. And when you have a structure. That's 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 well developed. In the charter. That outlines the balance of power. Not because you don't trust one another, but because it's important. It's not a matter of trust, it's a matter of of procedure. And how things. Are done in your community. The our constituents trust that we have a good system. That has checks and balances and. And and also, you know, also, I think it's important that the caucuses. Are function well and there's communication between the caucuses. That during the process are regardless of what what the issue is. And there's discussion. If if possible. On issues. By the president and the minority leader or whatever you have. Prior to 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 meetings, that's so important. To to arrive at better better decisions versus. It it's a train to nowhere if you you don't, you know, do the preplanning. And those caucuses are there for a reason, they need to be functional. Thank you.
I think I would say. Budget, obviously, budget, 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 right? We have the Board of Finance, so the so in Bridgeport, the budget committee and the council are very important and. Obviously gives you lots of sway there, right? I would also say, don't ignore ordinances. I mean, council legislative bodies have power of ordinances, which can make vast change in a in a city or a town. And some people just don't recognize that sometimes, the power that you have to do that. And the last thing I think that's very important, at least the way that Bridgeport is set up. We have lots of boards and commissions that actually have real power in Bridgeport. And everyone, the mayor appoints, but the council approves. And so making sure that the council has good control of who is being approved for boards and commissions is extremely. Important, like things like, you know, things like WPCA and who gets the contract, things like that. That's determined by by that the Parks Commission, extremely powerful in Bridgeport, folks like that. It's it's important for any of those appointed boards and commissions that 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 you retain your right, don't just give up the right to the mayor just to appoint. That's what I would say.
One of the things that on our last charter revision. I attempted to do was it failed in the. In the Charter Revision Committee. Was to allow the council to at least have a couple of appointments to boards and commission, because. The experience in with the in a previous administration was that that all boards and commissions were. Commissions were appointed by the mayor confirmed by the council and so there was a series of. Gaps, it was a series of vacancies in the boards and commissions and a lot of commissions, which are advisory. And some actually have statutory power. They were they were dormant on that quorum and many of us in the council. Had submitted names to the administration for consideration and never really didn't hardly took our names, our recommendations into consideration. But again, that was that was an attempt to, I would say, as a power grab, but at least to have it in the council so that the council could have. Some authority to get some of these boards and commissions up and running, but. It was it was a failed attempt, but I would just throw that idea out there as as well, as part of the powers of the council to try to gain some additional powers.
I agree with you there, TJ. Before I answer the actual question, just on the note of. Of appointments in New Britain, appointments are all done by the mayor, there is no approval of the council. And so what we have is, of course, a Republican majority of. Yeah, New Britain's crazy. I see some heads. We have a Republican majority on all of our commissions. But then we also have Democrats who align themselves with the mayor, filling the democratic seats on boards and commissions. And so there are, there is effectively. Effectively total party control or total ideological control of boards and commissions. And I as chair with along with a registrar, of course, could revoke. Democratic Party registration, but that is a very, very hard thing and difficult thing to do. So I would definitely recommend even. Giving, you know, in a nod to bipartisanship is structure it so that each party appoints their own members to boards and commissions. In terms of sort of the the function of the council, I mean, I think, you know, not to oversimplify, but. Government has three functions. One is you is you do policy and ordinances, right? You set the laws of the land. One is you, the other is you set the budget to determine to what extent you can sort of do those policies and then you have to administer it. In my view, the 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 policy is entirely a legislative function, so that's entirely a council decision, what what the the rules of the town will be. With the zoning, all of that. The administration is is almost entirely an executive function, with the exception of some very powerful positions like. Department heads that should, there should be a collaborative process, but I would steer away from sort of getting involved too much in the day to day operation, because that really bogs you down from doing. The other things. And then that budget is the trickiest one, because you need to have a balance between the person. Whether that's a strong mayor or a city manager doing the day to day. Stuff, because they have the most understanding of what what the budget needs are, but you don't want to, you don't want to give too much of that budget power away, because then. That's really what you're there for, right? If you you express our, we express our values in spending money. And if you lose control over spending money, then you lose control of probably why all of us ran in the first place.
I could keep going for all night, but I think it's time to let people go. I'm really grateful for everyone's attention. And so no more questions and no other questions from folks in the audience. Thank you. So we need to wrap this up, Mr. Mednick, but before we do that, and I will let you do that. I I can't tell you how valuable this session was. And I know we could go on for another couple of hours and it almost seems like it should be a part two to this piece, because this is the key to how we're going to. Function moving forward. And so I appreciate every one last one of you giving of your time and being honest and frank. And we certainly appreciate that and and you, Mr. Mednick, for getting this group of folks together. Who have all different kind of experiences or or government, but it's all kind of the same and we kind of find ourselves in a little bit of. Everything. And so this was really very informative.
And I just want to thank all the speakers. I appreciate your your time and your your response to my request and. We'll probably call on you again during the course of the next year as it goes to charter revision. But thank you very, very much and thank you to the council for indulging.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Good luck to you all.
So and then lastly, you don't mind if we call on you, because we know that we.
No.
You know, whatever you want.
We may do something.
You want to know how to fail a charter, you just call me and I'll let you know.
But don't, don't, I don't associate myself with that remark.
Glad to be.
Thank you.
First to adjourn. One favor, aye. Thank you. Thank you so much.